Okay. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council regular session agenda for Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, seven P M. here in the council chambers. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. All right. Good evening and welcome. Welcome to those who are watching online. Welcome to those who are here in the council chambers and welcome to those who are watching at a later date. After calling the meeting to order, saying the pledge allegiance, we have a few ceremonial items. I will note that we did one of the items a little bit earlier for the North Bend High School Band Proclamation. Some of those members were also in the choir and have a performance right now, so they had to do that and take a quick run, but we really appreciate all the students coming in. It was fun to see them. And you can catch that probably online later. The second proclamation that we had listed was the North Bend Golf Team. I will go ahead and move this from the agenda and see if I can track those kids down at the high school and give them the proclamation in person. How's that sound? So the third one would or C on the agenda is the proclamation for North Bend Public Works. So I'll go ahead. National, not North Bend. Should I put on my glasses?
Yeah.
National Public Works Week.
Pretty good, Ralph.
Here's our proclamation to the city of North Bend. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are a vital means to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of North Bend. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and perfecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems. With buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public's best interest of the citizens, civic workers and children in the city of North Bend to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year two thousand and twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Congratulations.
Thank you. We have really good staff. We're not in trouble, but all our employees work hard. We keep our costs low and all we have limited resources, they keep everything really well, and that's all our staff. It's a pleasure to work.
I can bring you up back in a moment. What I'm going to do is let her do this proclamation instead of having the council come twice. We'll do your photo and then the other one.
Okay.
So the next on the agenda is a proclamation for this is for how is it listed on the agenda?
Mental health awareness month.
Awareness. All right, so we'll go ahead and do another proclamation in the city of North Bend. City of North Bend, Oregon proclamation. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall professional and whereas mental illness affects almost every family in America. And whereas people with mental illnesses recover, they've given the necessary services and support in their communities. And whereas people with mental illnesses make important contributions to our families and our communities. And whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental, um, mental illness every year. And whereas only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment for his or her mental illness. And whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many people, many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help. And whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, our communities, schools and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors for people with mental illness. Now, therefore, I, Jessica Eagleby, mayor of the city of North Bend, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-three as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you. Come on down. Let's take some photos here now. I'll let you for that. We'll get more and more attention at this.
Yeah, that's okay. If I can get you to come over this side a little more that way, out of the screen there.
Okay.
He's already got this gap. Okay, this way. Look at the birdie. See the birdie? Oh, it's right there. Look, it's right above my head. All right.
I used to point dogs with the spares in the camera like. Did it work? Yeah. Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna see us, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. All right, look at Ralph's compass.
Must be his pen.
You notice the fire chief is in the left. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, and I will make arrangements for the call team. Okay, so can we have to our recorder? If there is somebody here that wants to sign up for public comment, is that something that pin, I know you cut the deadline off or the on Zoom. If there's somebody here in person, would they fill out a form?
Yes, before the meeting.
Okay, so once the meeting has started, okay. So it sounds like they might, we have some people that might be signing up for public comment. Do I have the privilege to?
Yeah, discretion.
The discretion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so take discretion and let me go ahead and do that now. All of you know. Normally you have to sign up before the meeting, but people come all the way down and let them do that now. Okay, thanks.
That gets gone.
Okay.
Who took my budget in my council rules book? My budget, my council rules book are gone.
Somebody took them.
Well.
Okay.
Always usually right here for me.
Okay, and we have some.
Then over there on that, then over there, that binder.
My budget book and council rules book isn't over there. Is it in the binder?
We didn't move them when we were taking the picture, did we, for the?
No, they're always right here on my table.
One of the band kids run off with some budget reading for tonight?
They, they, they weren't here tonight, so they, they're.
Okay. All right.
They disappeared.
All right, well, that takes us after the, our proclamations, it takes us to number three on the, which is our consent calendar. Do I have a motion from the council? Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Jones and a second from Counselor Gar Boden, all in favor of the consent calendar as presented, sorry, discussion. I apologize.
Yes, I would like to pull item number, what is it, D off?
Okay. Counselor Nordoff is asking to pull item D off. Are we going to move that under a separate line?
Has to go immediate after, so you'd have to address that item immediately following this.
Okay, do we want to amend the motion to pass the consent calendar with minus D?
I move to accept the consent calendar with the exception of D, which will move to a separate item.
Okay, heard a first and a second, first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Gar Boden. Any further discussion about that? Okay. No further discussion, all in favor of accepting the consent calendar minus item D, which will go to the next line item. Please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so then we'll go ahead and take a look separately at D. What page would that be on?
There's no, it was in that from the work section, so it was an appointment, some mayor's appointment.
Okay, so item D was the mayor appointment. We had a resignation of the, I had appointed the finance director to the water board. And there ended up being a situation where he's not able to do that. Counselor Nordoff had expressed interest in that position. And so I wanted to go ahead then and appoint her. I didn't hear any concerns from the council on that. And so if so, and we don't need to take a vote on it, it's just confirming my appointment. And so that's what item D is, so. Do we need to take a vote since we remember?
For, for the policy. So your charter says that rules of governing and we don't have a policy governing it. So I would say go ahead and just do a vote of confirmation. And the city attorney advised that because of the wording in the water board's new policy, we'll simply just propose policy back to the governing body on mayor appointments.
Okay, so can you help me form with that?
So just entertain a motion to go ahead and accept your.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to accept my appointment of Counselor Nordoff to the water board.
I move to accept Counselor Nordoff's appointment to the water board.
Okay, heard a first Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Gar Boden. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the appointment of Counselor Nordoff to the water board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that takes care of all the items on the consent calendar. Now we'll go ahead and move into public comment. I have, it sounds like we have some people who've signed up. I also have some items to read and nobody online though, correct? Okay, all right. So first of all, I want to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an open part or an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak, so that's whether you're in person, online, or even if I'm reading. Our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance with Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder are taking notes of any action if needed. So I'll go ahead and start with some of these ones that I have to read into the record. And I have one from Juliette Claybolt. And this is, it says increases to residents taxes via and fees on water bill. I mean, this is a request to respond to public inquiry and public provide transparency on increasing city taxes placed on residents' water bill. So I'll have our city recorder tie me on this one. And Ms. Claybolt writes taxes placed on the residents of the city of North Bend keep increasing. There is no transparency on the city website that outlines why money collected from our property taxes is not enough to run the operational cost of the city of the north of North Bend. The Kuz Bay, the Kuz Bay Tax Board stated the city of North Bend can take our property taxes and use it for whatever category they want to put the money towards, e.g. fire, police, administrative salary, egg hunt, Easter egg hunt, donations to other organizations. If the city then short money for other needed categories, they can ask for more money in fees that they collect on our water bill. City fees on my water bill have increased over forty dollars since last year. The city of North Bend is collecting six hundred and seventy dollars a year in fees on my water bill in addition to the property taxes and the two hundred dollars a year sum for the for a bond measure for, for the closed North Bend pool for the last years, last two years. I have asked the city manager, Mr. Milliron, multiple times in an email over the past month to please respond to my correspondence requesting transparency to the residents concerning these tax increases. After two months of being ignored and only partially being responded to, I contacted Madam Mayor informing her how residents were treated when contacting the city hall. She told me to go to the water board and to get my questions answered about the increased fees. I emailed Madam Mayor back telling her that the water board stated they have nothing to do with setting the fees of North Bend and then tells them to collect them from the residents. It has now been two weeks and my email correspondence to Madam Mayor has gone ignored. The residents had a right to know why our property taxes are not covering the cost of operating the city. We have a right to know where our money is going. We need to be aware of expected increases in fees to be able to manage our own finances. Coming to the city council meetings and speaking on this platform seems pointless. If no one at the city ever responds back to the residents' concerns that they bring forth to the council and city staff. We do not want to waste our time talking to you. We want, we don't want to waste our time talking to you. We want to talk with you. We want our concerns and issues addressed and not to be ignored. Otherwise, we are just paying thousands of dollars a year to run the city of North Bend for you all to have an appointed position that only serves your interests and needs, but not ours. I would like transparency on the city website to where our money is going and to specifically state what tax increases the city of North Bend is adding into the water bill for budget shortfalls after collecting property taxes indicating the maximum the fees will be. And that was from Ms. Claybolt. The second one to be read into the record is on, from John Minor, and it's on, it says McPherson Tennis Courts. Pickleball is, okay, so it says pickleball is a fun sport for ages and genders is one of the fastest growing sports in America. I support the creation of new pickleball courts at the McPherson Tennis Courts. From its humble beginnings in nineteen sixty-five on Bainbridge Island, the sport of pickleball is now played worldwide. The Sports and Fitness Industry Association has named pickleball as the fastest growing sport in America for the third year in a row. On a level, I have seen participation grow from new players to over eighty members of the Bay Area Picklers and local pickleball group. In a few short years during our local matches, it is not unusual to welcome drop-in tourist players traveling through the area. These tourists are a boon to our travel industry and staying in local motels and eating in our restaurants. One limiting factor to pickleball growth is the availability of pickleball courts with the good services to play on. The current proposal before the city of North Bend to resurface some experience in courts and add two courts on the pool patio will be very welcome additions. I would like to offer the city council an alternative, an alternative or perhaps an additional proposal. Currently, the majority of outdoor pickleball in the Bay Area is played on the old North Bend Middle School tennis courts, which has six pickleball courts. These courts are also in need of resurfacing and permanent nets. I would like to see the city of North Bend join with a North Bend School District to resurface these courts instead of or in addition to the McPherson Courts. Thank you for your time and consideration, John Minor. And so that is John's comments. Okay. Now I have some in-person public comment tonight, and so I have, is it Jim Corliss? Yes, Jim, if you want to go ahead and come forward, we have a chair here and we have a microphone that you can and it looks like you are speaking tonight on street maintenance. Is that correct? All right, come on down.
Okay.
Okay. The, we do record the audio of this. We're streaming on YouTube, so if you pull the mic close to you, then it's a little bit easier for the online people to hear. And when you're ready to speak on your subject, our city recorder will go ahead and start the timer. You have three minutes.
Okay. I want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me. But I've got to say I'm proud to be a North Bend resident. I like living here. So what I've got to say is something that does bother me because I like it here. It is our streets. I live on Lincoln Street. There's a lot going on up there right now. I, I get it. There's a development going on behind the store and over the years, there's been more other ones. The airport has developed down there, the senior center, the DHS, senior services and just deliveries up to the little store. They had a whopping thing going there for a while and the deli was going wild and the trucks were up and down the street. I'm not against people making money, doing a good thing. But our infrastructure is suffering for it. It's the houses up there and the streets and everything were put together in WW two for, it was a airbase for during the war and we're still living up there and I like it. It's a little windy. Anyway, what's happening is that asphalt's deteriorating and when people drive by spinning up and putting dings in people's rigs, I tell people, come over to the house, don't park in front of the house. Well, sorry, that's about all there is, you know? And I get, yeah, but budget restrictions and, but what's been happening in the past is just a little coal patch thrown in the worst of it and it's kind of stacking BBs, it looks like to me, so. It's just my estimation and I'm not an engineer or a budget man, but if we just bid off a chunk at a time and did the job, yeah, it'd take a while, but I think little by little, we'd be money ahead by taking a tack like that and trying to actually make a difference. That's how I feel about it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thanks for your time.
All right, the next public comment that we have in person tonight is Gary Wallace. And see Gary, are you a North Bend resident or a Kuz Bay resident? You're Kuz Bay, okay. Yeah, welcome.
I was coming to speak on behalf of residents and business owners about the homeless camp proposals for public locations. I have a statement that people agreed upon. On behalf of deeply concerned community that shares a common goal, the safeguarding of our beloved city. We come together with a sense of urgency and purpose driven by the need to protect the well-being and security of our community. Our community firmly believes that the council's adherence to a camping ordinance against our explicit wishes puts our neighbors, businesses and the entire vicinity of the proposed public locations at significant risk. The prevailing sentiment is that our concerns have been disregarded and the council is prioritizing adherence to an unsuitable ordinance over the well-being and safety of our community members. We recognize the complexity of homelessness and the challenges it presents. However, it is crucial to acknowledge that the ordinance in question is ill-suited for our rural community which lacks the necessary resources to effectively address the multifaceted problems that are likely to arise from the implement implementation of such camps. Our neighbors and local businesses already struggling to navigate a difficult economic landscape will bear the brunt of the risks associated with the proposed public locations. It's our collective responsibility to protect their interests as their livelihoods and the vitality of our community are at stake. Therefore, we implore the council to reconsider the consequences of this proposal and listen to the voice of the community. We firmly believe that the alternatives, that alternative solutions tailored to our rural communities' specific needs should be explored. It is essential to prioritize the safety, security and economic well-being of our neighbors and local businesses. Furthermore, it is imperative to recognize that a one-size-fits-all approach as dictated by the ordinance does not align with the unique challenges and limited resources of our rural community. We must chart a course that takes into account our specific circumstances, providing the necessary support and infrastructure to mitigate, to mitigate the potential negative impacts of homelessness. Homelessness homelessness while ensuring the protection and growth of our community. In conclusion, our community is deeply concerned about the council's adherence to an unsuitable ordinance disregarding our explicit wishes and jeopardizing the safety and well-being of our community members. We are.
All right, thank you. Did you have just a last, last line or two there to read or?
Pretty much, but.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. And please stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay. All right, we also, so that was, we, that was heard from Gary and the next person is Erin. Is Erin? Yeah, Erin, if you're available, come on down. Hey, and welcome.
Hi. I'm Aaron Simons and I've lived in North Bend for, since probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine. Bought my house up on Lincoln Street back then. And I've seen the city approve several development sites up there, DHS, the Indian Housing Authority, you know, and I've seen more traffic from the little market up there and now West Plumber has applied for, going to apply for a housing thing in between Lincoln and Oak. And it's like three acres, three and a half acres. Well, I've seen lots more traffic since the city's allowed that on our street. Our street has deteriorated so bad that pea gravel is three foot wide down most of Lincoln from Virginia down to just the other side of Connecticut. And I understand the city's limited on funds. But you've allowed such development there and so much more traffic that it's wearing it out. Okay, I noticed your staff has constantly been down there patching, patching, patching. I've talked to them and they're trying, I understand. But it's not working. It's coming out. As soon as they put it in, it's gone within a month, two months. Okay, it's not doing any good. I'm asking the city to please evaluate that and repair it. Repave it, it needs it. And it's not much on the other side of Connecticut, all the way up to Virginia. Okay, the north side is just a few feet from that. It's got to be taken care of. It's putting rock chips in my car because I park on the street, my wife parks in the driveway. It's tearing it up. I, I understand, but we have taxes and we're paying them. Help us out. I mean, if you're going to allow this much more traffic and more development, something's got to be done. You're collecting more taxes. So please take care of the area that needs to be done. The, you know, street sweeper doesn't seem to be coming anymore. There's too much gravel or whatever it is, I don't know. But it's coming apart. You know, I, I've never been to a city council meeting to complain or anything. It's my first, but it's come time to, that we address this issue. I understand you're limited on funds, but you've got a bigger way to fix it if you're going to allow more development in that area between us and Oak. It's all getting developed. And I, I know we need housing and I appreciate that. But we're paying the price. And we've been there for years and we're paying taxes on it. Would you please look into it and fix it? I mean, we'd appreciate it. That's all I have to complain about.
Thank you. Okay, that was the last of public comment. Mr. City Administrator, I'm going to ask you a quick question because I think it's pointed to some of the comments tonight. Is our budget meetings already available online?
Yes, everything is published online. It's livestreamed actually.
Okay.
And then every single document was shared on social media with links back to it. It was also sent out to the news media with the same links that staff and in fact, all staff and council got the same email.
Yes, great. That'll be great for people with questions about the budget and want to see where those fees or the the funds, so that'll be really helpful for people to look at those. All right, so we're going to go ahead and I think that takes care of all of our public comments. And next up, we have a, we have a couple of different things that we're going to be doing. We have item five, which is our public hearing. I know we have our city attorney online. I think we have Mark Wolf with us tonight, correct? And so, yes, how are you doing this evening?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I'm going to warn you, my eyes are adjusting to new contacts and reading glasses and so things are still a little bit fuzzy with me. But I'm going to go ahead and try to read through the script on the public hearing. If I get to the point where I can't do it anymore, I'm going to pass it over to our council president, but I'm going to give it a go, okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so our first item number five. Okay, so our first item number five for public hearing is ordinance two zero six seven. And this is the time set for a public hearing on ordinance two zero six seven and ordinance amending the City of North Bend Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Housing Needs Analysis Production Strategy and Economic Needs Analysis as functional plans. At this time, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. So I'll ask the counselors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to report? Hearing and seeing none, will the staff please present their reports? Thank you. The big font size really helps.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, you're asked today to do a couple of things in ordinance two zero six seven. First is to adopt the Housing Needs Analysis prepared for us and I believe also Matt Hasty and Brendan Buckley are online if there are questions. As well as our city planner Derek Payne. The Housing Needs Analysis was prepared as because we're a city of over ten thousand, um, so we just reached that threshold that the state division of land conservation and development helped fund this program to produce a housing needs analysis for the city, which looks at our our lands, our buildable lands and our housing needs for the next twenty years. We had some issues with it, but it follows what the state requirements project. They did add some addenda on this program relating just some historical context because the growth rate was projected extremely low in our opinion, but so in the executive summary, they updated that and you also received a little bit of an analysis separate document because technically in a land use decision, we cannot use that document, that separate document as part of the land use decision requirements. We're open to questions on it. Overall, the buildable lands inventory, the needs analysis. Staff was fine with. The only thing we had issues with was the growth projections. And I won't get into that too much, but that's. And so we're asking that you adopt the both the Housing Needs Analysis and adopt ordinance two zero six seven, which has some comprehensive plan amendments associated with the requirements of the Housing Needs Analysis.
All right, thank you. I'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There's a time limit of three minutes per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance two zero six seven? Okay, and is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? No, okay. All right, I will now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about the matter for the staff?
Just to, just to reiterate, and I think all of us agree with this. The the projections for the housing needs were were much lower than any of us experienced either as individuals or any of the organizations we've heard about or talked to. Um, I'm curious about, and I've read the addendum. I'm curious about what the staff thinks about the additional projection that they had, which I appreciated. I also am curious about if you think that even comes close to what we've seen.
Staff reviewed it based on history. The numbers are right out of PSU's estimates on the current ones. They picked a little different time period than we had looked at. I had looked at the previous ten years. They looked at twelve and the previous two years, which we had a growth rate of about point eight percent over the previous ten and almost two percent the last two. Uh, according to PSU's numbers, however, we think a realistic rates in the realm of what is processed in that memo, about point seven, you know, we had a a recent bubble to a certain extent and we may still see that. With the state having pushing affordable housing, um, you're we're seeing some development. If it comes through, uh, I think our growth rate's going to be quicker, but over a long period of time. Frankly, we're running out of land to some of some of the buildable lands I'm not picking on it, but are until the uh, land value gets or the property values get higher are not realistic to build on at this time and and we're trying to do affordable things, so that makes it difficult to, where you have difficult sites to build on because a foundation. I've designed some special foundations for homes on posted stamp lots and you can easily be a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars just in your foundation on a, on a lot that's not standard, we'll just put it that way, instead of thirty to forty, which a normal foundation would be, so. Affordability as property prices rise will maybe there and some of the buildable lands will become buildable. We have enough lands, we think, for the next ten years and possibly twenty, but again, economics drive this. We we expect to see a short bubble at least.
Thank you. Okay. Well, there's no further discussion. I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And then that'll take us to number six, which is our ordinance number two zero six seven. An ordinance amending the City of North Bend Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Housing Needs Analysis Production Strategy and Economic Needs Analysis as functional plans. Let's see. So I will now ask staff to give the report. Is there, I'm just, Miss City Recorder, is he already gave the report in the public hearing? Does he need to give a report in the ordinance section? Just or just ask one more time if there's any questions, maybe?
Very quickly, the ordinance itself is amendments to the comprehensive plan in accordance with the Housing Needs Analysis. So it is in short, it's a, just a cleanup of the existing comprehensive plan and adopting language in the comprehensive plan as per the ordinance for two zero six seven.
Okay, all right. So I will now entertain a motion to have the first reading be by title only.
Make a motion per hearing, the reading of ordinance number two zero six seven be by title only.
Okay.
Okay.
I had a first from Counselor Gar Boden and a second from Counselor Gall. And so that would then be to our attorney would be the next, right? So I have a first and a second for the first reading of ordinance two zero six seven to be by title only. And I guess we vote on that. Any discussion? All in favors, all in all in favor of ordinance two zero six seven to be read by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we can go to the city attorney to read that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm having some technical difficulties and cannot. Oh, and I think it might have just popped up. There we go. I am back. Sorry about that. Ordinance number two zero six seven and ordinance amending the City of North Bend Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Housing Needs Analysis, Housing Production Strategy and Economic Needs Analysis as functional plans.
Okay, thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to have the second reading be by title only.
I'll go ahead.
Okay, so, because we're on two zero six seven. Yeah.
I'll move that we accept this reading by title only.
The second read by title only. Okay, I heard first from Counselor Gall, a second from Counselor Gar Boden for the second reading um, to be by title only. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the second reading of ordinance two zero six seven to be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so that would be back to you, Mark Wolf, for the second reading to be by title only.
Correct, thank you. Ordinance number two zero six seven and ordinance amending the City of North Bend Comprehensive Plan and adopting the Housing Needs Analysis, Housing Production Strategy and Economic Needs Analysis as functional plans.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two zero six seven. Um, well, after we do the the motion to adopt. So that we have a, we have a motion to adopt, I'll entertain a motion to adopt two zero six seven.
Move to adopt ordinance two zero six seven.
I have a first from Counselor Jones, second from Counselor Gar Boden. And now I'll look to our city recorder. We have a first and a second to adopt. Ask one more time if there's any discussion. And if there is no discussion, should I do a roll call vote? Right, okay. So Counselor Jones, how do you stand on the ordinance? Counselor Gar, okay, Counselor Gall.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Nordoff.
For the ordinance.
And I too am for the ordinance. All right. I believe that takes care of this ordinance then. If there's, okay. That was for two zero six seven. Now we can go ahead and move on to agenda item number seven, which is a public hearing for ordinance two zero six eight. How you doing? Okay, we all good? Public hearing ordinance two zero six eight. This is the time I'm set for a public hearing for ordinance two zero six eight and ordinance amending the title eighteen of the North Bend City Code to adopt findings of the Housing Production Strategy Functional Plan. Um, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. For this is for two zero six eight ordinance, are there any conflicts of interest um, or ex parte contacts to report from the council? Okay, hearing and seeing none, will the staff please present their reports?
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, ordinance two zero six seven adopted the Housing Production Strategy, um, Housing Needs Analysis. Ordinance two zero six eight amends our municipal code. The other one amended the comprehensive plan. This is language amending our municipal code in conjunction with the Housing Needs Analysis uh, in chapter eighteen. Primarily those amendments is allowing multi-family housing on almost any residential lot. In fact, it does allow it subject to criteria. Which ranges between thirty-five hundred square foot minimum per dwelling unit. So in our seven zone requires seven thousand square feet, thirty-five hundred square foot minimum. So typical lots still could only have a duplex. Doesn't mean they can stick a triplex or a fourplex on it because you're limited by square footage. Down to twenty-five hundred square feet in a five thousand square foot zone, our five, multi-family, uh, very similar. So what this ordinance does is allows for a little denser housing place on these lots and the amendments to chapter eighteen are reflective of such. The only other minor issue within the ordinance, uh, on multi-family housing, it allows to count for some on-street parking if it is available directly in front of the property, not across the street, front of the neighbors or anything else, but directly in front of the property.
Okay, okay. I'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the pub, the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of ordinance two zero six eight? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff? If there is no further discussion, I will close the public hearing at this time. Okay, so that's two zero six eight ordinance and then or public hearing. Now we'll move to the number item eight, or that was seven. Uh, now we'll move to agenda item eight, which is ordinance number two zero six eight. This brings us to ordinance two zero six eight and ordinance amending title eighteen of the North Bend City Code to adopt findings of the Housing Production Strategy Functional Plan. I'll now ask the staff to give the report. Come on down. Our public works director, Ralph Dunham, will come one more time. Is there any additional information?
Sitting down for her getting up, I guess, uh, honorable mayor, members of the city council, simply this amends chapter eighteen. This ordinance amends chapter eighteen in accordance with your housing production strategies as described previously.
Okay, all right. I'll now entertain a motion to have the first reading be by title only.
I move that ordinance number two zero six eight be read by title only.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Nordoff and a second from Counselor Schultz. Um, is there any discussion? All in favor of ordinance two zero six eight, um, first reading be by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our city attorney can read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number two zero six eight and ordinance amending title eighteen of the North Bend City Code to adopt findings of the Housing Production Strategy Functional Plan.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to have the second reading be by title only.
A motion to have the second reading of ordinance two zero six eight by title only.
Okay. I heard a first from Counselor Schultz, a second from Counselor Gar Boden. Is there any discussion? All in favor of ordinance two zero six eight be read by title only, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wolf?
Ordinance number two zero six eight and ordinance amending title eighteen of the North Bend City Code to adopt findings of the Housing Production Strategy Functional Plan.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance two zero six eight. Um, is there a motion to?
Motion to adopt ordinance two zero six eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
First from Counselor Schultz, second from Counselor Gall. Um, any further discussion? All right, um, I will then go into a roll call vote. We'll start at this end this time. Counselor Nordoff, how do you stand on the ordinance?
For the ordinance.
Counselor Schultz.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Gall.
For the ordinance.
Counselor Garvin.
For the order.
Counselor Jones. And I too am for the ordinance. The ordinance is now adopted. Is it hot in here, anyone? I have a small reading. Okay, it's all that reading, man, and I I didn't leave Larry yet, okay. Um, okay, so that took care of two zero six eight. Number nine on the agenda is resolution number three, 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 four, designating sites for the acting of sitting, lying, sleeping, and keeping warm and dry. A resolution designating sites for the act of sleeping, lying, and staying and keeping dry. It's number nine. Okay, um, is, is there a? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we accept resolution three, 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 four.
Okay, our first from Counselor Gall and a second from Counselor Gar Boden. Is there any discussion? Um, I think that there is a lot of education and information that we need to make sure the residents of North Bend are aware of this resolution. It's clear to me in public comment tonight and just by other things that you hear out there and see in the community that it's still very confusing for people to understand what the state is requiring us to do.
It's not just either. It's it's this whole district, this whole court district of the state.
Yes. Is, there is, um.
It's not just work.
So I would, I would encourage anybody who has questions about this to go to the City of North Bend's web, uh, website and look at the homeless resource page that has lots of information about what we have to do as a city and a state and that that by adopting this or by adopting this resolution of act, um, you know, for sitting, lying, and sleeping, that we are not creating a homeless camp. I think that needs to be, make sure that that is very clear. So there's lots of resources out there to walk people through. There's meetings, town halls, all the things. You could spend hours, um, really informing yourself or have a conversation probably with any one of the counselors, would talk to anybody to help people understand it. Um, and I want to make sure that we just are noting that, that I think that it's still very confusing for people, so. Resolution, um, three, 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 four, I heard a first and a second. We've had some discussion. If there is no further discussion, um. All in favor of adopting resolution three, 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 four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, number ten on the agenda is the McPherson Tennis Courts resurfacing. Uh, resurfacing and adding two pickleball courts to the existing McPherson Tennis Courts. Also add two pickleball courts to the pool patio area. Um, now I've I've got our public works director right here. Um, now I, I've got our public works director right here who gave us a presentation last night, but I know that we also have some um uh. Could you reiterate maybe some of the discussion that we had last evening and why the pool pickleball courts are not um going to be included?
Honorable mayor, members of city council, uh. We have received a price. For resurfacing the McPherson Tennis Courts, um both that uses tennis and pickleball courts. In review of. The swimming pool without. Replacing the surface. Uh, existing concrete slab which is sloped. And cracked at this time. It is, I'm not gonna say severely sloped, but has. Basically shaped in four directions, which is not suitable for a court surface. Uh, we actually pulled the pool section out of it because of five thousand dollar resurfacing bolt. Wouldn't last very long um because of the cracking, although we could cure that. Um, the slope of it just is hazardous for somebody to actually try to play pickleball on that court. Uh, or that area. Uh, we had looked at replacing it. We were in the price range of around eighty thousand dollars to replace a slab. For the pools. So at this point, that's not our intention to do, um at least in this budget here. We'll put it that way. Uh, we did solicit quotes from multiple surfacing, uh sports surfacing contractors. Um, staff recommends that we award to the McPherson Court. And forgive me, I didn't write down the name of the. The contractor.
What page?
That's eight hundred twenty-eight.
Page eight hundred twenty-eight? Okay.
It's our live rating.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you've got the. Yeah. Eight hundred and twenty-eight. And um, Mr. Dunham, what is the timeframe on that? Is that?
He anticipated he'd have it uh by July.
There it is.
Initially, of course, if you didn't notice the quotes from February, but uh I still see it. Paul talked to him. Unfortunately, this was a our park superintendent's project who's currently out on uh family leave. But uh, so I haven't been in direct contact with him, but. In our discussions and our staff meetings, he thought he could do it within two months.
Yeah, okay. So I see that the recommended motion is to approve twenty five thousand dollars for the McPherson Tennis Courts re- resurfacing pickleball courts. Um incorporation. Um. Is that, yes. Is there a motion from the council?
I motion to approve, approve not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars for the McPherson Tennis Court resurfacing.
Okay. Second. I heard a first from councillor um Schultz, a second here from councillor Goll and Nordoff. Um, uh, any, any further discussion? All right, I think it's great. I feel like there's some people in the audience that might cheer for that tonight. Um. We didn't approve it yet, but all in favor of the recommended motion to exceed uh twenty, not to exceed twenty five thousand dollars to the McPherson Tennis Courts um court resurfacing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we can clap.
And that, that did include new nets too, by the way.
Yes, okay, great. Um, thank you. I know that um. You know, that there's hopes for more things like this down the road, but again, take a look at the budget book. That's out there. Threes are thin, but I'm glad that we are able to um do something like this and that's um. See what the future brings, right? Okay, all right. So that takes care of number ten, number eleven, authorization to repair um combination sewer cleaner intake. Um, Mr. Dunham, it's your night.
It appears it is. Yeah.
Yeah, earn that proclamation.
Honorable mayor, members of city council. Uh, our nineteen ninety-eight vector, which is replacement cost for that combination sewer cleaner. Is around six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, the pickup tube on it has worn away. Um, the machine actually has been well maintained and is in good condition. For the low old price of fifty five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents, we can fix that pickup tube and keep that machine on the road. That machine uh basically cleans our catch basins, provides hydraulic excavation. Uh, and also cleans our storm sewer system, so.
Okay. All right, well, I see the staff recommendation is to uh approve the purchase of the intake tube from Owen. Equipment. Do you have a motion from the council?
Motion to approve the purchase of an intake tube from Owen Equipment Company.
All right, heard a first from councillor Schultz, Schultz, second from councillor Goll. Any further discussion? All in favor of this um staff recommendation of the approval to purchase intake tube from Owen Equipment, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number twelve on the agenda tonight is action, if any resulting from executive session. And we do not have, I believe, any that executive session that was from the council meeting. Um, so we'll go ahead and take care of that. Number thirteen is the city administrator's report.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Uh, this uh report gets posted to the website and our social media. Uh, just want to remind everyone, uh, the city will be closed from Memorial Day, so. Our public safety continues to work. Our public works and emergency staff's always on twenty-four call. Uh, but the city uh administrative staff and city hall and the library will be closed. Uh, our city recorder will be uh headed to training to the Northwest uh Clark's Institute. Um, uh Macy is celebrating her six months with the city. And as part of that, um. Um, also, uh, we want to uh invite the ci- invite the city to uh join North Bend for a free concert. It'll be uh June second. Uh, at the event tent on Union, uh Timber Wolf will be playing. And there'll be food trucks starting at six o'clock, concerts from seven thirty to ten. And I'd be remiss if I'd also say that Stephanie Wilson is also celebrating uh next week, the second, her one-year uh anniversary with the city as well. The um library will be closed on Friday, May fifth for staff development. And the police department has posted a community service officer position. Uh, that's because our existing C S O, you all may know that as code enforcement or code compliance, like I like to say. Um, has been offered a position as a recruit police officer with the city of North Bend. So uh, we're promoting from within, and so we'll be uh looking for someone to replace uh Michael Miner's uh shoes. Uh, staff training at the pool uh started this week. There's uh twenty-one folks that uh were hired, uh potentially additional four. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Claire McKee is also celebrating her six months anniversary with the city. So uh, congratulations uh to those. Uh, the rest of the very lengthy report is available online or on social media. Um, for your reading pleasure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That takes us to number fourteen on the agenda, which is our committee reports. And I know that we have. Several committee reports. I'll let councillor uh Goll, do you want to speak to? He and I were both uh bright and early for the. U R A for the Port of Kuz Bay.
For Kuz County.
For Kuz County.
Urban renewal uh agency had our budget meeting hearing and uh meeting this morning. It went really well. I mean, just like, just like budgets, uh the one number, gotta make. Make sure it doesn't exceed the other number. And uh, but we actually got into some conversations about upcoming projects and, and. And there's some pretty exciting stuff going on. Uh, we talked about rail infrastructure. We talked about. Other things that, and it was a really good meeting. I mean, it was well attended. Uh, I don't know, there was probably. I don't know, fifteen, sixteen people around the table and Jessica and uh another person with Kyle Stevens was on. On Zoom and i- it went really well. Two county commissioners were there. Uh, i- i- it was a, it was a good meeting. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Yep, okay. All right, um councillor uh Nordoff and councillor Jones and I met yesterday for our new ad hoc committee. That we created to explore um looking at how Northman was celebrated. And um we appointed uh myself as the chair and councillor Nordoff as secretary, and I believe our madam secretary has a report to read.
Yes, we. Explored what, where we could go with July Jubilee and moving toward the future. And we decided that it was too late to do anything different for this year, of course. Because we're almost in June already, but we did put together a statement for future. July Jubilee celebrations. And this, this is our statement. For twenty twenty-four and beyond, the council committee recommends that council create a formal special events committee. To explore city special events across the calendar year in the spirit of July Jubilee and potentially a brand-new way. In which North Bend celebrates its birthday. Uh, the recommendations, number one, to include several councillors and representatives from the North Bend School District. Chamber of Commerce, the downtown and Broadway area businesses, and other community representatives. Number two, consider North Bend's history, culture, and value to create a s- a celebration that resonates with the community. Number three, consider and evaluate post-events. Post-event feedback when planning subsequent events. And I might add that Mayor Engelke brought forward. A, a big scrapbook uh that she borrowed from Pat Cho Pierce showing going way back to nineteen eighty-three when the event started. And that that was, I guess, uh. It happened because there had been a vote for consolidation and it failed and July Jubilee kind of. Was born out of a celebration that there was no consolidation. And I had only knew, known about one consolidation, which was in two thousand, one consolidation vote, which also failed. So with that background, I think we, I, I know that Jenny and I learned quite a bit about the history of it. And saw some nice photos of Mayor Engelti when she was a, a princess back in. Nineteen ninety-something. Anyway, it was great. It was, it was very interesting.
Yeah. Councillor Jones, did you have anything that you wanted to add from our committee meeting?
Uh, no, it just, the, the idea struck me that um. You know, just hearing about things from the past, it underscores for me this. Uh, I think a shared value for staff and council and residents that want to create events that. Everybody can go to, that families can go to, that people with diverse interests can go to, that. Use our outdoor space as well, and that, you know, are, are an economical um entertainment to bring the community together.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, I did um reach out to Pat Cho Pierce to get some um just history on it and um hadn't heard that story before about how. July Jubilee started because of the push for consolidation at the time, and they weren't sure if Northman was, at the time, it was the eighty-year anniversary. And they weren't sure if um they were gonna get to have another birthday. Um, but uh some of you may already know that the actual. Birthday when the city of Northman was signed into um becoming a city was, it actually happened in December of that year. Um, because there was a backlog at the Capitol. Um, apparently in nineteen oh three, everybody was certain to, trying to incorporate and become a city. So. Although the application was filed in July, um the city didn't become a city until um December. So um, so we, uh, it was a good committee meeting and um we definitely, that, the purpose of this committee was to kind of discuss this and think about what it would look like. Uh, what we really want, and that will be our recommendation to the council is to um create a committee by resolution would be our recommendation. So um, that's our committee report. And so then I would, would we work with the city administrator then to? Talk about what that would look like? Is that something then that would be an agenda item to create that resolution in the next? Get that on the agenda in the next, in June?
Yeah, the council can ask for an agenda item for the uh next work session for discussion, yes.
Okay, all right. So we will go ahead and that is how we'll move forward. Is there any questions from the councillors um on, from us on that? Okay. Any other committee reports? No? Okay. Um, council comments. Oh, uh councillor Nordoff, we'll start off with you down there.
Um, golly, um. I'm glad that we're kind of post-COVID and can even think about having a July Jubilee. I think that's great. Um, I'm really proud of the band. Uh, I learned that this is their fifth championship. They had a series of four that were pretty back-to-back about five years ago. And now they're, now they're back and this is number five. And um. It, it's, it's a marvelous program. It really is. So very pleased to see them win and I can't wait. I'm gonna try to find it online, but it. That would be a, her husband, um Amber Yester's husband. Recommended, you know, go up and hear the competition because it's that good. It's really pretty exceptional. So that's pretty neat.
All right, councillor Schultz?
Um, I just wanted to mention that I did see that we posted the application for the city councillor position. Um, so again, there are some questions to fill out. So if you're interested in doing what we're doing. Um, and joining us, it's online and it's available until June seventh. Um, I believe. And then I, again, the high school does, always does an amazing job. And again, from, from elementary school, music teachers to the middle school music teacher to the high school. Um, band teacher. And again, just, just the passion that the music department has and, and watching them is always a really great time at my job. Um, and so that makes me happy as well. And then again, I just wanna. Um, again, I do think we're making some decisions and we're moving along with certain things, and so I'm happy that we're doing that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Goll?
Yeah, uh, I don't hardly ever go to any band concerts, but. I'm, I'm able to see the band during football games, during basketball games, and that is one well-oiled machine. Uh, and uh, and I'm proud of them, you know, I'm, I'm. Athletics is probably my heart, but I, I'll give the band kudos for that. Uh, and. This last weekend was uh the state tennis uh playoffs at, at try, or at Corvallis. I went up, uh, and, and everybody asked, what do you, who are you supporting on the tennis team? And I said. Well, I've supported my son all his life. And he's the coach. So, but Reagan Farm was in a, in a grudge match for the state championship. And the, the gal she had to go up against was the gal that came here and played districts against her. And Reagan beat her district. So Reagan was going in as number one seed and. And had a, a grudge match and went into a tiebreaker and, and didn't come out ahead on this one, but uh she, so she got second in state. But she is an outstanding chess player and those two people are gonna meet. Multiple times before they both graduate and it's can go either way every time. Then I've gotta give Brownie kudos. Yesterday was his birthday. And he came in here and he gave us the, the great news. He gave us a birthday present. Uh, he gave us the great news that the, the, the fire department. Landed a, a really, really lucrative grant uh that really plays into the hand of. You know, a little need that was at the fire station. So Brownie, thanks for giving us a birthday present on your birthday. So, yeah. That's all I got.
Yeah. Hey, uh councillor Garboden? Councillor Jones?
So. I, I just want to pay special attention to the people who bother to make public comments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because of. The way government works and an attempt to be transparent, which works. But it's weird. It is like no kind of conversation that you can possibly have, whether it's a business or an organization or a family or a friend. Um, and so for the people that come and speak or that, that write, uh having done that before being as a council member, it's, it's scary. It's embarrassing. I, I felt very embarrassed and stumbled and all these kinds of things to just bring forth ideas. And so I just want to take a moment to, to thank people and encourage others to bring their comments to the council. There are things that are going on behind the scenes um in many, many different layers that are often uh. Agreeing with and addressing the very same issues that people come to us. And um, you know, a lot of that information is available on the website. We do a great job publishing it, but it's always a lot of layers to weed through. And all we can do is keep asking people to do their best to research what we have and keep bringing their comments to us. Um, it's, it's a very strange proposition, you know? Um, it's just, there's a lot of rules governing what we can and can't do in the spirit of um people getting their moment to speak. Um, and then specifically for the camping ordinance uh updates that we've made. Um, you know, there's. Homelessness is not a, a, the, an invitation to commit crimes. And one of the most powerful things that we've done, that we had to do, but that will happen with having an ordinance at all. Will be that our police now have an opportunity to actually patrol. And the locations that we've chosen and the times that we've chosen, um, uh, we believe.
Um uh we believe are in the best uh interest of having effective patrolling by the police. For the limited staff that we have, and we also hope that. People start recognizing that we don't have. A police staff level that we can support with our tax base. Um we'd like to have at least. A couple of more people, um and we don't have the, the money to do that in our tax base and there. You can learn about that on our website. We have those articles, but it, it takes all of us group efforts to understand this stuff. So. Thank you for your comments. Please tell your friends and people concerned, you keep bringing them. Believe us when we say that there are things going on behind the scenes and we are listening and trying to address. And we just, you know, we're in it together. We're literally in it together in all ways. So thank you, and I hope you keep exploring.
All right, thank you for that. I appreciate you saying that, Counselor Jones, because. So I teach human relations and communications at the college, so it goes against everything in my body. To sit here and listen to public comment and know that I'm not, it's really not the time to respond. It's where we're supposed to listen. And so it's always really hard because to me, communication is, you know, having that back and forth, so it always feels really awkward. So I appreciate you saying that. Um. And so, well, we'll start with you, by the way. Happy birthday next week.
Oh, it's tomorrow.
Oh, it's tomorrow. Happy birthday tomorrow. So this is your birthday eve.
It's my birthday.
Your birthday eve. Happy birthday. Thank you for volunteering for the city of North Bend. We appreciate you.
On that note to my fellow counselors, uh my birthday present to myself this year is a total knee replacement. So I will uh not be on the team next.
All right.
Um and uh I appreciate you and and.
It's gonna be on. It's a total knee replacement, not, yeah, yeah.
I, I hurt my knee when I was thirteen pretty badly, so it's just been a series of events of becoming more and more peg-like. Anyway.
Well, happy birthday to you.
And I'm sorry I can't be with you to share. Some of the hard stuff, just listening and really want, anyway, thank you.
And I hope Chief had a great birthday. We sure enjoyed your cake, so thank you for that, yeah. Um lots of celebrations all around. Um couple nights ago, SWAC, um Southwest Oregon Community College softball team, when their championships. For, I think it's called N W A, the Northwestern League. And so um since it's a community college, we thought it was great if we could have both North Bend. Uh police and fire and north and Coos Bay police and fire um do an escort. So that was really neat to see both. Um so if you saw like. Like, felt like the, the whole community was on fire and everything. It was because everybody was heading to the college, and so we did the big thing and um. I love it. Mayor Benetti always answers my call. He really does. And I call him, I'm like, hey, you want to come down and like see the softball team come in? And um so when they came back in over the bridge, they did the police escort and we did cheers for them. So. You'll hear sirens again later this week on Thursday, I believe, when um the Northern High School track team is making it to state, so. Um that's gonna be really fun, so they'll be headed out. And uh you know, we have all these celebrations, you know, there's another proclamation that I didn't read tonight for the golf team, and I'll take that to the school and do that there. Um but I believe I saw an email today from our city administrator that we will be planning a community. Um or a, a parade, was it June first coming out?
It's um the same parade that we did last year, so it honors everyone at every level at the uh school that went to uh state. That was a really nice deal.
So if I, I wanna say we'll be hearing more information um about that, but it'll be where it starts at the high school and it goes around the community. Uh or goes around, you know, a, a little, a few block radius and um you know, you'll have everything from band to the tennis kids to. Um a- everybody who had all of the celebrations this year, so we'll get to celebrate them all at once. Um and. Yeah, just kind of back to, you know, some of the things about like the budget. We've gone through that in the last um couple weeks. Um I really want to encourage anybody if they have any questions or they don't quite understand like what is on their water bill. Um please reach out to the city of North Bend, whether it's the city administrator or if you have questions uh that we think one of the, the counselors can um. You know, answer, we'll try our best, or we can put you in um touch with the staff because there, it's, some of it can be really complicated. Um I remember when I first got on, I had no idea when I first became a counselor. Ralph Dunham probably knows what I'm gonna say. I, I emailed him and I said, hey. How much would it be if we fixed all of the streets right now?
It's a good one.
And if I remember the number, it's sixty million, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
And it's gone up maybe sixty-four million, and I'm like, great, how much we got? And was it two hundred and fifty thousand?
We have two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Per year, yeah.
So it is something that, you know, the city of, of Coos Bay, how they have addressed this, they're in the same scenario. They're getting less and less money on the gas tax that comes in because. The cars are more fuel efficient. Um you know, there's just all sorts of reasons why. Um they put it, they, they put a, yeah, electric vehicles and all of that. Um so they have a fee on their water bill for it. Um and I do think that, you know. Please dig into the budget and look and see where um you see if there's. Any other scenarios that we can come up with, but it is going to have to be a conversation that this council and future councils will need to talk about. Um, okay, I think that's it for me. And was there any other items on other business? Okay, no other items on other business? Then I will adjourn this meeting and then we can go into our urban renewal agency meeting. So city council meeting adjourned. And then we'll reopen into urban renewal agency.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you for proving the principle. And your advice.